Well, hello, everybody. We will go ahead and call the meeting to order. Clerk, will you call the roll?
Corliss, here.
Hallie Burton.
Morales.
Here.
Nash.
Here.
Sted.
Here.
Willetts.
Here.
Five present, one absent.
Next up, we've got Alicia. Welcome, Alicia. Have you presented? You've presented once before, right? Okay. And I just want to make sure that council members, this is Alicia McAndrews, our budget director. Welcome again with the IBC.
Madam Mayor, council members, thank you and good afternoon. I have for your consideration today, two interim budget changes. First, the Department of Arts and History is requesting a $70,000 budget neutral adjustment for the Redwood Park Passage art installation within the Eustick Townsite. This project is a collaboration between Arts and History, the Neighborhood Investment Program, and the West Valley Neighborhood Association. The $70,000 of, $70,000 of percent for art funding will shift to the Office of Community Engagement, which manages the NIP budget. This move aligns the funding source with the project manager and allows for the efficient financial oversight. The additional dollars are needed due to cost increases since the original budget was set. The total Eustick project budget already includes $40,000 from the percent for art and $167,000 from Neighborhood Investment Program. The project is expected to be completed this summer. At that time, any unused funds will be returned to the Arts and History Department Percent for Arts Fund. The second IBC is from Planning and Development Services, and they're requesting to initiate a $522,000 capital project for the design of a new public pathway in Northwest Boise along the Spoils Bank Canal. This is the first step in a larger effort to build a 1.65 miles of dedicated bicycle and pedestrian pathways. It connects key areas from Horseshoe Bend Road to Hill Road Parkway and Pierce Park Lane to Castle Drive. The design will improve access to three schools, three parks, and two community activity centers, making it easier and safer for families and children to get around. The pathway also supports the Boise Pathways Master Plan and the city's goal of ensuring all residents live within a 10-minute walk to a park. In terms of finances, the city was awarded a $3.7 million federal grant to build the pathway. This $522,000 request is just for the design phase, and over 92% will be reimbursed by the federal grant. The city's local match for the design phase is $38,000, which will come from the existing Pathways Program capital budget. A future local match of about $235,000 will be required at a later time when the construction phase moves forward. Design is expected to begin later in this fiscal year, with construction anticipated in fiscal year 2028. And that concludes my presentation of the April interim budget changes. If you have any questions, we have, we do have some representatives from the relevant departments. I'm happy to take questions or call them up.
Madam Mayor.
Hi. Thank you very much for the review of these interim budget changes. Just a quick question on the grant that's awarded for the Spoils Bank. Do you know who the granting agent is on that or what the grant is?
Councilmember Corliss, I'm going to refer to my colleague Dane to answer the question.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Corliss, the federal grant was awarded through Compass through their annual call for projects. These are federal funds. They are not, what do I want to say, currently the target of any sort of grant review. They are formula funds, which are allocated through a different process and aren't of concern, given the information I have today.
Thank you. You're reading my mind, Dane. Appreciate it.
All right, I'll take a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the interim budget changes as provided by staff.
Second.
Do you have a motion, second clerk?
Corliss.
Oh, sorry, discussion.
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to thank city departments for working on this, particularly the park installation. We have our fingers crossed that it's going to be done before Eustick and Bloom. It's been a long time coming. I am so thrilled for it. I think it's going to provide a lot of history and identity for the park and just appreciate all the work that the city staff has done. It's, it has been a journey, so thank you. And then just a mention on the Spoils Bank Pathway, I just think these are the kind of things that our city residents expect, and so I'm excited to see us continue to do them. Thanks.
Clerk?
Corliss.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Sted.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thanks, Alicia. All right, next up, we've got, welcome, Peter, from Kerbit Public Works Department, actually, and on the composting program. While you're getting set up, I hear from residents throughout the city, wherever I am, about how happy they are that they can compost more. And yet they are still asking when we can compost at apartments and in businesses. And so people love the changes and additions that have been made, so thank you. And I know you guys are working on more, so look forward to seeing this update.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Council, for having me today. Yeah, we're just going to give you a quick update on the compost program over the course of the last year. Just a quick agenda, gonna talk about the program history for those of you who haven't been here since it started, quick overview of that, some 2024 program review, some of the new additions that we have made to the program, and also some opportunities we see in the future. So hopefully you can see at least the larger font here, kind of describing the history of the program, and it started back in 2014 with the landfill study that Ada County did, and it found that we, that 46% of residential waste was organic waste, and that kind of stuck in our, in our brains, and, and we, we worked for a couple of years to figure out how can we, how can we get that waste out of the landfill? And, and looked at other programs, and in 2016, we were able to permit our composting facility, and we'll talk about that facility in a little more detail later. And at that time, we were just approved to accept yard waste and fruit and vegetable waste. So that's, that's the only materials we took, and that's just from residential properties. We launched the program in 2017, delivered over 70,000 carts and took thousands of calls. I still have fond memories of those days. And we opened the give-back sites in 2018, and that's where our customers can come and get compost at no cost. They can pick it up for free. In 2019, we started compost delivery program, and that's where we deliver to community groups and community gardens, and they just go online and request a delivery of compost, finished compost, and we deliver it to them for no cost. The, we also, in 2021, did a waste audit, and that was just a city of Boise waste. Found out that about 20% of residential waste is food waste. So, you know, we're still looking, and we're striving at that point to try to get more food waste in, in the compost program. Another milestone we had was in 2022, where we got our compost certified through the USCC, is United States Composting Council. And so we, we have certified compost. You have to go through a variety of testing criteria to make sure that your compost is up to their standards. We did that. We started selling in bulk in 2023, and we were able to sell all of our compost before we were trying to give it back, and, you know, we're still establishing sales contracts. So we've been able to increase the price of that, and we sold out of our compost, so it's great, it's in demand. And then we started the food scrap drop-off program for multifamily in 2024. We'll touch on that a little more in detail later. And in 2025, as you may have heard, we started accepting all food waste. So we got our facility approved to accept the other food waste, such as meats and dairy and things that weren't accepted before, still no liquids. And then just to give you kind of a general overview of the compost program, we have about 77,000 households that participate in the program, and that's 97% of our, of our residential customers. It's week, it's collected weekly, year-round, and it accepts yard waste and food waste, as we said. It also includes like the special leaf collections and Christmas tree collections. So we try to get, when, when, when people have extra waste, it's really nice, they can put out bags of leaves, and we collect those and their Christmas trees. And of course, the collection vehicles, they take that material, transport it directly to our city-owned compost facility. And there is our city-owned compost facility, 20, we call it 20 Mile South Compost Facility. It's co-located with the city's 20 Mile South Farm Biosolids Facility out in Kuna. It's 26 acres, processes 30,000 to 35,000 tons of organic material each year that we keep out of the landfill. Oversight of the facility is by city staff, and the day-to-day operations are handled by Republic Services. So, you know, here's, here's some highlights on our facility, and, you know, just over the last year, we've had 32,000 tons of organic waste that we've processed. That's about 30% of Boise's residential waste. We've sold 18,000 cubic yards of STA-certified compost, and we've seen a good increase in the revenue from that sales over the last two years. That, that revenue is, of course, just put back into the cost for the program. We have four contracts now for wholesale and bulk sales. We up from one, so we're, we're happy to have some more redundancy there. And we've seen, we've had about 730 trucks of compost loaded for distribution in the, in the course of the past year. Some other highlights you see down there, we've added a temperature monitoring system to our facility that constantly monitors, monitors the temperatures to make sure that the compost is, is doing what it's supposed to and getting hot. It's really nice, saves some staff time and provides really good data. And as I mentioned, we, we had our operations permit approved to increase the, the food waste that we can accept, and we sold out of compost for the, for the first time this year. So all good things happening in 2024 there. A little more on the give-back program, we, we really are proud of the, of giving back the compost to the community, and we, we have one of the most comprehensive programs in the country, we feel, to do that. 35, or 3,500 yards distributed to our two give-back sites. There's one in West Boise, one in East Boise. You can just show up anytime, load up your compost in whatever containers you have, and, you know, our customers really like it. They like it so much that we would run out on occasion, so we added some cameras where you can look on our Kerbit website and see how much compost is available, so people don't go there unnecessarily if there isn't some available. But we've been keeping it well-stocked, just sometimes people take a lot. We've also had about 650 yards of compost that we've applied to city parks and, and development projects. I think Spalding Ranch took, took quite a bit and some other parks projects, so it's great to, to be able to use it within our own city operations. And then, you know, I mentioned the community give-backs. We've had about 90 deliveries there to neighborhood community gardens, some to schools. And that's just such a great program. People really appreciate it and can't believe that we will deliver them compost at their site. I mentioned the couple of new things that, that I mentioned previously that we kind of wanted to go over in more detail to make sure people understood. We expanded the materials that we accepted in our program just this year. And, and that includes pretty much all food waste that, that you create. Now, we don't want any liquids, and we don't want any like hunting carcasses or anything like that, but mainly for, you know, a residential household that you can put pretty much anything in there, whether it's, you know, just your dinner scraps or meats or dairy or what have you. So we're really trying to get, get people to use the program more for food waste and not just for yard waste. Now, of course, there's probably some things going around in your head when you hear that, right? Like, oh, that sounds, you know, a little scary or maybe a little gross. So, you know, we, we definitely have some customer FAQs that we developed, and, you know, just going over those right now in case you get questions from your constituents. So how can you prevent odors in your cart? One thing we like to say too, and remember is we're just taking that material from one cart, the trash cart, and putting it in the compost cart, so it's the same material that would have been in your trash cart, just in your compost cart now. And, you know, a couple of things we try to tell people is, you know, hey, if you keep your cart in the shade, and now I live on an alleyway, I can't do that, so that one's out. But you also can layer your food with yard waste or leaves, things like that. You can see in the picture there, we tell people like, hey, you can put your waste in a paper bag and roll it up, so it doesn't create as much odor. You can line your, the bottom of your, of your cart with a piece of cardboard, so that way when they dump it, and if you put food waste right on the bottom, it, that cardboard will fall out. Cardboard's okay to compost, and it just keeps your, it keeps your cart cleaner, so it doesn't create as much odors. And then some people even keep their, if you have a big freezer, you can keep your in-home container for your food scraps in the freezer, and then when you dump it in there, dump it in there, you know, it, it's a little more frozen and doesn't create as much odor. Will, will the food waste attract pests? We haven't seen any of that when talking with other cities. We haven't heard of any issues there. It's, it's not really going to create any more pests than, than it would in your trash cart, as we said. It, you know, sure, in your trash cart, it might be in a plastic bag, but pests can get through plastic bags pretty easily. And, and we talked about meat, like, I, I think people, that's, that's one of the things where they get hung up, is like, oh, you can compost meat? Yeah, we can. We have a lot of temperature data and compost results that, that show that that's possible. It's actually really good for our compost. It makes it a richer material and adds nutrients. It adds moisture, because a lot of times in the summer here, we don't have enough moisture. We have to water the compost. So anything to give it more moisture is great. And as I mentioned, the temperatures really get hot. We have to make sure that the compost is above at least 130 degrees. Correct me if I'm wrong, Lisa. 131. Wow, that's pretty close. 131 degrees for three days in a row, and we even cooked a steak in the compost pile before, which some staff members ate. You can see that on Instagram if you're so interested. Pretty funny. And, and another new program that, you know, adds to the material we collect and take to the compost facility is our food scrap drop-off pilot. And, you know, the, the compost program, as it started, was just for our single-family homes, single-family homes, duplexes and triplexes. It wasn't for multifamily, and we, you know, we realized 20% of the population around there in Boise lives in multifamily households. So we, you know, we wanted to, to provide some equity to them, provide, you know, the environmental benefits, the climate benefits, and make sure they understood like how, how this could work if, if they moved on to a different home. So we started two drop-off locations for people to drop off their food waste that live in multifamily housing. It's free to participate. It's really a low-cost program to the city, because we just pick it up with our residential trucks that are going by anyhow. And we've had over 100 households register. We're trying to get 200. That's our goal at the end of the, at the end of the year. So if you know people out there, let them know, and, you know, people, people are really excited about it. And, you know, it's great. People can participate if they want to. If they don't, they don't, they don't need to. And just to mention, you know, the climate impact of food waste, you know, it, it, there's been a lot of talk about that lately and, and some, some new information on it. And as you can see here, you know, food waste causes 58% of the methane emissions from landfills. So it, and it just breaks down really quickly. And, and it can, can release that methane before the extraction systems that they have in land, and some landfills can pick out, can capture that methane. So it's one of the reasons we want to keep, keep food waste out and to create, you know, a product that we can give back to the community. So a couple of opportunities that we're looking at for, you know, the coming years. We did a survey, a community survey in 2024 and got about 4,000 responses on that survey, so some pretty good data. And, you know, we asked, we asked the community, what kind of materials do you put in your compost cart? And you can see the results here. You know, almost half of our customers are only using that for, for yard waste, 44%. And so there's definitely an opportunity we see there to educate our, our customers and to try to break down some of the barriers that they might have to putting food waste into their compost cart. So, so we're really looking at that. We're gonna, we're gonna increase our, our outreach on that, and we're gonna, you know, talk to people and make sure we understand, hey, what could, how could we get you to, to use that and make them understand the importance of it? And some opportunities in the compost give-back and delivery. You know, we have a great program, and as you can see here, people are aware of it. About 80% of our customers have heard of the compost program, give-back or delivery program. But only, only about 30% use it regularly, right? So we want to get some more of that 50% that you see there that, that have heard of it, but don't use it, and really get them to get the maximum benefits out of the program that, that they're participating in. It has a lot of, a lot of great benefits, including, you know, saving water, improving, improving the soils, increasing the ability of the soils to, to grow vegetation, obvious climate impacts there. So really, really, really great for the soil, really great for, for the community, and we just want to make sure that people are aware of it.
Did you ask the, the question next for those folks that have heard about it but don't use it, why they don't use it?
We, we didn't, no, Madam Mayor. You know, it's definitely, these surveys, we have, we have, you know, limited amount of questions, but it's a great follow-up question that perhaps we can look at when we're, we're doing another survey.
Yeah.
All right, that, that concludes the, the brief presentation, and happy to answer any questions that people might have.
Yes.
Madam Mayor, thank you for the presentation. Appreciate it. I would just say, City Boise's program is so good that it made me get rid of my own compost. Because after I got the compost from the city, I'm like, I've never made anything this good, so.
Oh, you went and picked it up?
Mm-hmm.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Nash, thank you. I really appreciate that, and it does, we, we do encourage people to still do backyard composting when they can, but we're, we're happy that you're using our program and that, and that you enjoy it.
Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
I also just want to say thank you. Just this week, we got an email from South Boise Village Neighborhood Association. They loved the ability for compost to be delivered to the neighborhood, and I mentioned how quick it went last year, how excited they are to do it again this year. I just think that's such a great opportunity for our neighborhoods, communities to come together. Exciting. I was out at the Botanical Garden Site just a few weeks ago with my brother, getting a little bit of compost too, so. But I also just wanted to thank you for the pilot, for those households that don't have composting available through their commercial service or condo association or whatnot. That was something that I heard two years ago, and just it's been so exciting. Obviously, hoping that we get more participation, that we can expand those sites to other areas. Just, you know, thinking about Southeast Boise and being a little bit further away from those pilot sites and being able to identify more of those ways that we can get people engaged, maybe closer adjacent to some of this higher-density development that we're seeing. So really excited for that, and thank you for your work on that. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Morales, yeah, thank you. And, you know, we are looking at expanding that, the compost pilot for multifamily and, and adding sites. So we'll definitely look into that and, and look at where, where we need to put them and where the demand is.
Madam Mayor, thank you so much for the presentation. A couple of questions. I'm curious about how much of the, of what is donated actually ends up being compost, compostable? So in other words, like, do people forget, and they put things in there that they shouldn't? And, and how does that, what is the outcome of, of what actually is being contributed?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Willetts, yeah, I think if I'm understanding your question correctly, what kind of things get into the compost that, that don't belong, and how much kind of contamination do we have in there? Yeah, it, great question. I would say that, you know, our compost facility gets really clean material compared to other cities. We've talked to Republic Services, who runs, runs these facilities in, in, in many other cities, and they're always shocked about how clean ours are, how, how clean our material is. That being said, we, we definitely have issues with plastics mainly that people are putting there, whether it's plastic bags. We also see strangely a lot of dog toys. We think that's because they leave them in the yard, and then they mow up, and then they mow it, and they just put there. So we see a lot of plastic dog toys. I think we actually collected a bunch of them and gave them back to like the, the, I want to say the SPCA, but the, yeah, the places that take care of, of dogs and, you know, in need. So it, it, we do, we do see that, and I think the biggest thing that with the plastic bags is it's kind of windy out at our facility, and so the plastic bags were blowing, blowing away, like they get grind up, ground up, and then they were blown away, and they were getting onto the farm fields. And so we had to put up some, we had to put up some fencing to gather that up, and then we, we gather the, the small plastic pieces. So definitely just make sure people understand not to use any kind of plastic bags or any bags that say they're compostable. Just paper is, is all we accept.
Hello? I'm really curious about the opportunity to put organic material into compost versus the trash. So as a consumer, I can be really intense about leaves and, you know, branches and all that sort of thing, yard clippings, but I'm not as intense about food scraps, because I think, eh, it's gonna, it's gonna decompose in the landfill. That is, that is a very interesting point that you brought up about why consumers can do something differently. Could you talk to us a little bit more about that?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Willetts, sure. Yeah, I think it's, you know, of course, we really want people to not create food waste in the first place, so that's kind of like the, the highest tier, right? The reduce and reuse. And so we, we've been working on that also and trying to give people tips of, of like, how do you preserve your food well enough so it doesn't end up being wasteful? So, so we, we look at that first, like, let's try not to create this food waste, but we all do. We all have some, some food waste, right? And then, okay, next, we want to make a viable product out of it, and we, we wanted to not go in the landfill for a couple of reasons. Number one, it, the landfill's filling up, right? It's only got about 40 to 50 years left, and then Ada County's gonna have to build another one, and we'll, we'll have to pay for that, and it's gonna be a lot farther away. Gonna have to drive our trucks that much farther to get to it. And also, also, like I mentioned, instead of, when you put food waste- when you put food waste in the landfill, it gets in, it, it's in an anaerobic state, right? So there's no oxygen, gets compacted in there, right? That's what creates that methane, um, when it decomposes in a, in a environment that doesn't have any oxygen. So that's methane. So it's just a really strong greenhouse gas, as you probably know. And so you avoid creating that methane by taking that, that material, putting it and using it for compost.
I have two questions. The community give back program, when, um, Councilmember Morales brought up that is HOA organized it. Does it have to be formal organizations or can it be like a block of people that organize, um, a delivery?
It, Madam Mayor, uh, Council, it does not have to be a, a, a formal, um, organization. If somebody, we've had places where they're like, you eat, most of the time it is, right? But, um, because we have sort of a minimum that will deliver. So it's, it's, it's a fair amount of compost, right? We're not gonna just deliver like a tiny bit to one or two people because it's just not efficient or cost effective. But, um, yeah, we've had, we've had people that have, you know, just done like a, a planting strip in the middle of two streets and they just needed a bunch of compost and, and as long as they have a place that we can deliver it and they take responsibility for it after that, then, then we'll deliver it. And we really haven't had any problems, um, with that. We just made sure it's not obviously on the right of way or anything like that.
Right. Thank you. Um, thanks for your work on this.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you. And I, it still, still here for questions, but I just wanted to acknowledge, uh, Lisa Knapp. She's the, um, compost lead and it just has done amazing work with our compost facility and, um, just wanted to recognize her. Come on, Lisa, stand up. Just so people know, yeah, she, she really is the, the mastermind behind this and she pushes me sometimes to do stuff that I am a little scared to do and it usually works out. So, um, she's, she's awesome. And just wanted to make sure that she was recognized in front of council.
Thanks for doing that and thanks for your service. Really appreciate it. I think that's it. Have a good evening.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, next, Jamie's here to talk about the childcare transition. I just want to say that, um, I asked Jamie to come today to discuss how we're going to transition childcare safety and licensing programs over to the state. Because as you'll recall, the legislature passed the bill that took away from our ability to license childcare facilities and childcare providers. And while I'm disappointed this happened because we've done great work, um, I gave a directive to staff that we do all we can to take care of people. And that means putting our childcare providers and centers first, families first and businesses first, and thinking about how we ease this transition. Um, but by taking this work away, Jamie's going to talk about the transition. Um, but also I want the public to understand the things that we've done in response to public requests, um, that are no longer, um, going to be at the city as of July first. We reduced licensing times so that we could get facilities open faster. Um, that was done collaboratively with childcare providers, parents and businesses. We, and both for facilities as well as for individual childcare providers. We also provided a, um, a provisional license that allowed somebody to get into a classroom the next day with supervision. So you could open up a waitlist to even more students. And we've allowed childcare centers in mixed-use development by right with our zoning code. We have provided property tax relief to folks that are licensed to provide childcare in their homes. Um, and as, as of last count, ninety-two percent of the people that have childcare facilities in Boise in their homes that qualify for this tax rebate have applied, which I think is awesome. Um, but it's unfortunate that all this goes away. And what we are now tasked with is making sure that this is as smooth a transition as possible as the state takes responsibility to meet the needs of parents and businesses around the state and take care of, um, kids in childcare facilities. Um, and we are trying to be as creative as possible to ensure that people providing childcare today, um, aren't at risk of losing federal funding, that they can stay in the classroom. All this stuff can still happen. So parents know that they've got a place they can take their kids over the summer, um, as the state works to create a plan to provide these services in lieu of us. And Jamie, thank you to your, you and your team for all, all those things I've listed you've been involved with. And it's been great work and really trust your leadership and your team's leadership on this transition as we make it as easy and as painless as possible for folks providing care in Boise.
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. Uh, you will hear many of the same things from me as you just heard from the mayor. So I will talk fast through some of those details.
Oh, you don't need to talk fast. Public needs understand and you've done, you've done really good work. So.
Thank you. Uh, so the city has really been committed, as the mayor mentioned, to really high-quality, safe, accessible and affordable childcare through like local licensing for over forty years. Um, Kylie on my staff did a bunch of research and found that we began licensing childcare in nineteen seventy-two. So we've been doing this for quite some time. And certainly it's evolved over that time. But childcare has really been a major initiative of the city of Boise and really making sure that we have the standards in place to have high-quality care within our city. Particularly in the last ten years, we've seen a significant shift to higher standards than what is provided elsewhere in the state of Idaho. We've also provided standards and initiatives for those meeting our healthy initiatives, which is part of the city's program and really kind of our gold level of standard, which I'll talk about here shortly. As well as continually being creative and innovative to minimize cost and time barriers to enter into the childcare industry. So of course with that, we are disappointed in the recent legislation that has usurped our ability to provide this service to our community and our ability to continue to support this at a local level. But as the mayor said, we are committed to helping these providers transition to a fully state-run program through a consistent transition plan and a communication plan. So the legislation that I refer to and that the mayor referred to is House Bill two forty-three A, which removed the local option for childcare licensing. Today I will walk you through what some of those impacts are to the standards, to our providers, as well as to us as a city, and walk you through the transition plan and communication plan so we can all help support this industry through this transition. While I am speaking to these specific standards and impacts that are on this slide, I think it's important to note and remember as we walk through this presentation that these are also impacts on the city of Boise's children, to the parents of these children, to employers, to the larger economy and our larger community. So just be mindful of that as we walk through, even though I'm not speaking to some of those specifics today. So let's begin with the impact by numbers and the shift of workload that will be going from the city to the state and also shifting within the actual city. So House Bill two forty-three A will become effective on July first, twenty twenty-five. Therefore, the city will no longer be able to license childcare facilities or childcare workers. As we look at those numbers, as of the end of February, we had a little over two hundred childcare facilities that were licensed through us and about nineteen hundred childcare workers. Our code compliance team had also conducted about five hundred compliance inspections. That was in two thousand and twenty-four. And my team fingerprinted and the code compliance team reviewed the results of the background checks for over twenty-two hundred individuals within the childcare industry. All of those things will need to be shifted and absorbed by the state of Idaho. We do have fire here with us today who can speak to some additional details if you would like those, but they are going to see an additional workload shifted to them based on this legislation as well. Currently, all in-home facilities are inspected from the fire perspective by our code compliance team. Through the new legislation, those will be shifted to our Boise Fire Department, who does all of our centers already. But they will now be required to absorb an additional approximately eighty childcare facilities into their workload.
Could you explain while they're, why they are required to do these inspections?
State code is pretty specific that, uh, they work with the state fire marshal and that they are designees. Um, and so they can.
And why eighty additional?
Because what we had before is our code compliance team was delegated through our fire department, through our sections of code to do those in-home inspections. While as the centers are more in-depth with sprinkler systems, additional entrances and exits and things that the fire department did those. But our code compliance team was able to do the base fire inspections for those in-home facilities. So that's about the eighty, the in-homes that will be shifted to fire. I wanted to walk through as well, the impacts to the standards of care. Um, one of the largest impacts, and that's why I designated a slide just specific to ratios, is because we are going to see a shift in our standards for ratios. So how many kids per teacher are in these facilities? The city of Boise about ten years ago really shifted our stance and understood that fewer children per childcare worker meant a better experience and better quality of care. And if we think about it, it's pretty common sense, right? You have more one-on-one time between a teacher and a student or someone in childcare. Uh, you have additional educational opportunities. There's better supervision and safety. And there's less burnout when you, when providers have less children that they're taking care of. They're less stressed. You see less turnover. All of those things are true. And the city of Boise recognized that and determined that we wanted to have more stringent ratio standards to make sure we had that better excellence in care. So as you see here, the bottom line is where the city of Boise ratios and standards are currently. Uh, those are by age group. Uh, you can also then see that with the national average, we were still more stringent than the national standards. But as you take a look, particularly once you get to three to four years of age, the state really separates from that. Their legislation this year is the orange line. So that will be the line as of January, or excuse me, July first, uh, twenty twenty-five. Uh, the green line is their current level of standards. Other impacts to the standard of care that I really wanted to differentiate between what the city of Boise has done and where we are and where we are shifting to for the state is that the city of Boise does annual background checks and annual licensing for both workers and facilities. The state does not do licensing of workers, however, they do background check them. The background check standards for the state is that they do licensing and background checks for facilities every two years, rather than the annual that we do. And for individuals such as workers, they background check them every five years where we do annual. Again, the city of Boise determined, and we've been asked many times to take a look at whether we should do annual background checks. And we have seen instances where people don't self-report on crimes over their licensing period, things that we notice are not appropriate behavior for childcare facilities. And so we felt it very, very important to the city, uh, your predecessors on council, uh, to make sure that we did have those annual background checks to maintain that level of safety. In addition, we do annual compliance inspections for every new facility and for every renewal facility. And we do spot inspections. We are super close to doing spot inspections, so unannounced inspections to every single childcare facility under our program. So that's two inspections per year. Our code compliance team also currently responds to two-on-one calls that are referred to us from the state. In twenty twenty-four, we had thirty-eight. In twenty twenty-three, we actually did sixty-seven responses. The great thing with us being able to do those responses, we are able to go out and respond quickly. We actually have compliance measures and tools in their tool belt that they can use to get people in compliance. And if it's egregious, we can shut down those facilities. Challenge with the state is they are going to be referring those to agencies that don't necessarily have those enforcement mechanisms, but can only substantiate complaints and then send those back to the Department of Health and Welfare to actually follow up on and follow their recommendations. Certainly for the state as well as for us, if there's something super egregious or criminal, police can also follow up in those cases. The city of Boise is also most more stringent for transportation. We require anybody who is providing transportation for a childcare to be licensed. They're background checked. We make sure that, uh, they don't have pass driving violations such as inattentive, reckless DUIs. Those are things that are not currently in state code. And then I talked about the healthy initiatives as well a little while ago. Healthy initiatives, again, with kind of the good housekeeping seal of approval that providers could strive for, facilities could strive for. There were four components, a part of our healthy initiative standards, which were limiting screen time, having higher nutritional standards, having outdoor playtime, as well as providing facilities for mothers to breastfeed. Those will also be going away under the new state statute. To our understanding, they are not going to be adopting those standards at this time. So as the mayor alluded to earlier as well, we also are going to have specific impact to providers. So obviously those standards are impacts, right? But specific impact to providers are going to be in place for things like our childcare worker licensing program. Currently, we subsidize that program and provide all new workers free licenses. We also allow them to participate in our program for free CPR and first aid. We've also put into place the property tax rebate for in-home childcare providers. And we did have a high success rate with that because we no longer will know who those providers are, what standards they're following, if they're in compliance. We're going to have to decommission this program. In looking at time barriers, we have also extended our hours of service because we know it's hard for childcare providers, or if they have family members that live in an in-home uh, center that need to come in and be fingerprinted, they can't always do that eight to five. So we've extended our offers, office hours one day a week until six-thirty by appointment only for childcare providers to make sure that the service is accessible to them and not hampering their business. We also have an interactive online map that providers and parents can use. This map is GIS-based. It's updated daily with the new facilities that are licensed within our programs. We also allow for a search on locations. So if you're looking for something close to home or close to work or somewhere in between, you can search based on that. You can also search on the type of facility. Maybe you only want to look at an in-home versus centers, you can narrow your search. You can also take a look at which providers meet the healthy initiative standards that are important to you. And it's a way for those providers to get that information out to parents as well. But unfortunately, without that data, without licensing, that too will be an impact to providers as it will be going away.
Madam Mayor, are you taking questions now or?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thanks, Jamie. Um, one of my concerns with the legislation was the potential of losing that property tax rebate program. Is there any way to salvage that? I mean, I know that the licensing piece is gone, but we, we do levy property taxes. What would a salvaged property tax rebate program look like?
We've looked at that, um, and there's much more room for waste, fraud and abuse, because we will no longer be licensing or inspecting or approving these. So at this point, um, we aren't able to continue that, which is, this was a signature program last year. I'm really disappointed, but, um, it opens the door to too many issues.
Um, Madam Mayor, maybe Jamie, maybe Madam Mayor. Um, is there any way to get the list from what the, from what the state actually licensed? I mean, is there a way to get that? I understand that they may not meet our standards because the, the state will have different standards, but is, is that information sharing available?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Willetts, I'm sure that that information is available. We would have to request that and see what type of information they would be able to release to us.
Madam Mayor, if I could interject on this, I, while I share feeling like feelings about the loss of this program, I'm also concerned about we, we're able to provide these services with the fee revenue that we got from licensing the childcare providers. And I, I just worry about the fiscal impact of being able to provide these services with, when the legislature has taken away that revenue. So I would just flag that.
Additional impacts include just additional steps for our providers. So right now, uh, fire inspection requirements and scheduling is really done automatically through their application process. And we work very closely with fire. Then to go do those inspections or our team are able to conduct those inspections. What will happen now is that there will be a different process, a separate process for providers to make sure they reach out to fire, schedule those inspections, and then provide that inspection to the state as part of their application process. Similarly, our planning and zoning requirement processes will remain in place. That is not something that the state took away. So we will still be requiring all facilities to follow that process, whatever it might be, depending on the type of facility. But as such, they're going to need to know that that is a separate requirement, especially for in-home that was just melded into. Uh, that was one of the efficiency gains that we have. It was melded into our application process. And likely they didn't even know as providers that they were going through the planning process as well. But that will be an additional step for all new providers, uh, all new facilities, as well as for anybody who is changing the type of care or the number of kids, uh, that they may be, uh, watching. So not to delay too much on our impact to the city, but we know there are going to be impacts, right? We've talked about changes in processing for fire for our front office team, so on and so forth. So we know that there are going to be processing, uh, changes for us. There is also going to be a budgetary impact, which is a net revenue loss of a There is also going to be a budgetary impact, which is a net revenue loss of approximately $72,000. We are working on transition and communication plans. So I appreciate our partnership with our community engagement team because they have been a wonderful resource for my team and my staff to stand up this communication and develop it so we can reach out to parents and providers. And I'll talk a little bit about both of those plans here shortly. We also know that we will have to repeal or amend our city code related to childcare. And we're working with our legal team. They will be bringing forth an ordinance or ordinances to address that before this body. And then I think one of the things that I just wanted to really touch upon is the lack of connection to this community. I know my team has really appreciated the partnership with the childcare providers and really working to problem solve and meeting the goals that we've all talked about here. And that is just something that's going to be a loss. We're going to be able to continue to connect with them in many ways. But I do think that that is something that we will feel here in our office. Also, our connection with several of the staff members across the state. They've also been very supportive of us in our programs and communication as well. So those are just connections that we will be missing. So what we've been working on most recently is how to have that successful transition that supports providers and families in our community. This is our transition plan here, and it is really designed to maintain consistency in the licensing process for providers until the city is no longer allowed to license anymore, and that date is June 30th of this year. It allows us to maintain our standards, which include, right? Those things that are important to us, making sure we're doing inspections, making sure we're still doing background checks. We will continue to do all of those things through June 30th. On the left, you can see that the state has agreed to honor any city licensing expiration dates and current licenses that we have and waive any duplicate fees with a current city license. So I just shared those communication points there and we will be communicating that information with our providers as well. This will allow new applicants as well as renewal applications to come in during this time and have a full year of licensure. For those who have licenses that expire between July 1 and December of 2025, we will be extending their licensing period to December 31st of 2025. And again, the goal is to support those providers. They can go through our standard process. They can get that extension. So they're not worried about their city license or timing, or how long it will take the state to transition or get them into their programs. Additionally, if there is a lapse of licensure, there is the potential that anybody having federal or state funds, those funds could be jeopardized. So we really want to minimize that risk for providers. And therefore, that is why we are looking at this specific transition plan. As you know, communication will also be critical during this process and to the success of this entire transition over to the state. Our goal is really to inform and educate internal and external users in advance of these transition changes, the same way that we currently do through those traditional platforms. So we have stood up a new website that actually went up today that has frequently asked questions on it for parents and providers. That way they can have the information upfront and we can maintain and update that website as we see new information coming out and know more about what the state's plan is. We will also have an email communication campaign with providers that gives them the information that is also on the website, but is directly aimed to them. And then as we send out reminders for renewals, we will include the new program requirements, resources to the state of Idaho, who they can reach out to, so on and so forth. So they have that information right at their fingertips at the time that they need to renew. We will also do a similar campaign through snail mail, including those key dates, that information. And we'll make sure that letters are also translated to the primary language for those providers where English isn't the first language. We do capture that information when they apply and we'll make sure that we are communicating that way with providers to again, ensure that the best information is getting to them so they can successfully transition over. And then also to inform our city staff about changes through the city's internal newsletter and let them know about the website so they can certainly answer those questions that come into us and provide that level of service that we've always expected and that we plan to continue. So at the end of the day, we really want to support our providers and our families through this transition in the best way possible with the best outcomes possible. And so with that, I will just stand for any questions.
Madam Mayor. Thanks, Jamie. That's a lot. Has anyone from Health and Welfare reached out to the city about transition plans at this point?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Willetts, we have had a conference call today. And then we've also had an email that was sent out to providers with some of this information as well. So looking forward to seeing more information coming from them that we're anticipating will be out this week.
Madam Mayor, another follow-up. Given that Boise has made this priority in the past, and we have folks that are dedicated to it. What is the workload plan as folks no longer have this on their plate? And we're losing a little bit of revenue. Talk to us about what that looks like in terms of your team.
Absolutely. Currently, there is no one person that solely does childcare. So this is a piece of several people's jobs, right? So it's not like we can look and go, this piece is going away and we're going to look at staffing in this way. So we will continue. We probably will support this for a year. So we will have this on our plates definitely for the next couple of months, transition through the next year and then come back and reevaluate if there's any changes that need to be made. But certainly this is not solely any one person's job. There's plenty of different licenses that we offer, different compliance that we also provide to the city. So this is just one component of many.
Madam Mayor, follow-ups. So what I hear you saying, Jamie, is that there's not an FTE that is solely dedicated to this.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Willetts, that is correct.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. Really appreciate you and your team, the leadership you've shown and the collaborative approach that you're taking to putting our providers first in this transition. Chief, welcome. We've got a whole crew of your leadership team as well here. So I appreciate that you're here to talk about a staffing plan.
Absolutely. Madam Mayor, Council, good afternoon. Great to be back with you. I've got only a few slides. I'm going to go through fairly quickly just to allow enough time at the end for questions and answers. So let's jump right into it. This is a conversation about four-person staffing, which I know you've heard about in the past. I think it's important to understand the history of four-person staffing. Where did this start? Why is it important? The starting back in 2001, the National Fire Protection Association, you've heard me talk about NFPA, formed a committee called 1710 to look at the proper staffing levels for paid fire departments and how to respond effectively. Since then, we've had language in the collective bargaining agreement. You can see a copy there that was in effect long before I got here when I was hired in 2020. That language continues today. And then I think you've heard me talk about the study that was done in 2010, 2013 by NIST, the National Institute of Standards and Technology, along with UL that looked at three-person staffing versus four and found that 25% improvement when you go to four-person staffing. So that's the history, but I want to bring it back local and why I think it matters to us and our community. One, we always strive to improve outcomes in everything we do. And if I had to frame outcomes in a very simple way of looking at it, it's time. Everything we do is time sensitive. And then training, how well are our firefighters equipped when they get on scene to mitigate the problem effectively? And so those two things really drive outcome and the time is really the big consideration here as we talk about four-person staffing. If you look at the fire standards, one of the things that we're very passionate about is called two in, two out. If we're going to put firefighters inside a burning building, that means two people go in. We want two people on the outside of that burning building to affect a rescue if they have to, but also to help just get the equipment in. Imagine a garden hose 100 foot long and you're trying to drag that through your yard. Now imagine an inch and a half fire hose full of water, heavy, trying to navigate around corners. We need people to help get that work done. So with two in, two out, we get to work quicker. That's the goal. Elevate Services, we are a Class II fire department right now through the Idaho Survey and Rating Bureau. There is no Class I fire department in the state of Idaho. Adding these staffing numbers will get us to a Class I. There is a potential for reduction in insurance premiums. I offer no promise to that. I've talked to the underwriters. They won't be able, they won't tell me what kind of reduction you could possibly see in residential and commercial insurance. But we do know that that Class I ban is by itself and there is a reduction of some sort in the insurance. This is just a visual, how many folks it takes when we get on scene of a burning building, residential house fire to effectively do work. And so you can see that two in and two out, but I also want to talk about the effect that four-person staffing has on medical calls as well. When it comes to CPR, for example, our medical directors who guide all of our medical protocols moved to a model about four years ago that's called a pit crew CPR model. That means every two minutes, a provider is rotating to do CPR. And if you've ever done CPR for two minutes, it's a little bit more daunting than you might seem. So that rotation means we need to have enough people on scene in a cardiac arrest event, for example, to effectively do that work. So that's where four-person have been asked, will it benefit the medical side as well, which we know is about 68 to 72% of our calls? The answer is yes. I want to talk about Dark Horse real quick. This is a software program. It's a predictive analytics software program that we were able to purchase at zero cost by eliminating old software that we were not using effectively and then purchased Dark Horse. And what you're seeing here on the left, this is Station 6 jurisdictional area. Station 6 is on Franklin Road, right in front of Bishop Kelly. This is how many times we weren't able to get four-person on scene of an incident within the eight-minute total timeframe. And that eight minutes is made up of the dispatch processing time, our turnout time, meaning the time the bells go off till the time we move to the scene, plus the travel time. That's eight minutes. You can see how often we weren't able to achieve that in Station 6's area. If we added a fourth person to Station 6, for example, you can see all those red dots go away where we improve our response to that area. That's about a 32% improvement in getting four people on scene of the necessary calls. Right now, we're at about 51.22% of the time. Station prioritization process, this is where I want to pause really quick and I just want to recognize the team that you have before you. This was proof to me that you can teach an old dog new tricks. As you know, when the mayor hired me in 2020, we had a conversation around four-person staffing. She asked me to build a plan and my focus was on the perimeter stations within our city because of that delayed second arriving fire engine time. The team that you see before you got together and said, is there a different way to look at this more comprehensive? That's easy for me to explain, easy hopefully for you to understand, and most importantly, easy for our community to understand on which the priority is. That first piece is response time. That is just simply how long in each station does it take for the second arriving engine to get there? We did that evaluation. The second one is just annual call volume. How many calls is that station running? We did that for every station. The third one is station capabilities. As you know, some of our fire stations have multiple capabilities outside within that station. So Station 1, for example, has a dive team, a brush truck and motorcycles to respond up in the foothills for rescue. Now, Station 14, I know in the Southwest, has a water tenor, a brush truck and a fire engine. So we took those and said, for those stations that have multiple disciplines, we're going to create a score for that. We use Dark Horse just straight up to say if we added a fourth person, which station has the best benefit? And then we also used, I want to, I want to recognize MORA. We did a full risk analysis to understand what are the risks throughout the city? So we have high rises, we have hospitals, we have tank farms near St. Al's. Those risks played a factor as well. And so all those five core evaluation areas put together, got us to what's next. So recap real quick. We have hired four-person staffing at Station 15 in Southeast Boise. We are adding four-person staffing with the new Station 13 off State Street. Our plan calls for continued adding of staffing as the 10 years go on, depending on financial resources available. And then if we look at the priority stations, and that's been a big question, what's next? We use those five criteria points, put it in the methodology, which is very objective, and came up with those seven stations. It would be the next priorities for the city as far as four-person staffing. That is your return on investment on where these four-person would go to get the best and most out of adding those four-person to each station. We did do a facility readiness evaluation. We do have some stations that aren't ready for four-person staffing. Unfortunately, as we did the evaluation, those stations are further down the list, so they're not a priority at this time. So we have time as far as those stations go. We talked about investment.
I just want to clarify on the priority stations. Given that you're using data and modeling, do you plan to, and this is a 10-year plan. I have to imagine that that's not static, but that you'll continually be evaluating that that the ranking is correct when you're making recommendations to us.
Absolutely. Madam Mayor, we have a slide on that to touch on that at the end. Yeah, absolutely.
Madam Mayor. Chief, on this slide, could you talk about facility readiness and maybe improvements and how we're considering capital improvements in those places? Are we trying to get that to align with future staffing needs there? And how are we thinking about some of these improvements that are either we're waiting on or we're just kind of punting on for now?
Madam Mayor, Council President Nash, I think the two need to go hand in hand. So as we know that a station is being recommended for a four-person, and we know that years in advance. We can also coordinate with Public Works and look at that master station planning and that remodel, if you will, and understand how those two tie together because there is a financial component to both. And I think they both have to be planned simultaneously, not independently. So investment, what does it cost? I mean, that's a great question because there is an investment into this and you have to make sure the return on the investment is good. If we look at adding three-person, which means we're adding one firefighter per shift at a station. We have three shifts, we'd be adding three firefighters. There's some one-time costs and that MNO and capital of 73,000 includes all the equipment you see on the diagram on the left as far, in addition to the portable radios, which are like mini computers nowadays, not the same as it was when I first started. They have a cost to them. So there's one-time costs there in MNO and capital. And then the recruit academy, we have to get those new firefighters through a recruit academy and then through their probationary time. And then the ongoing, and this is really the wages and benefits is about 517,000. So all total for a station to add fourth person as one-time and ongoing, it's about $781,000. I will add for some of you that have seen our master plan, you'll see every third year, there's a recommendation to not just add three firefighters, but six. And that has to do with a provision in the collective labor agreement. When we get to a certain number of full-time firefighters within the CLA, there's so many folks allowed off on vacation. So there's available spots. That is where we say we want to add float personnel. And this is a policy decision that will come down the road as we continue this. You can either do it one of two ways, pay overtime to cover those vacancies or hire the needed float personnel like we do have today to cover those vacancies as they occur. So annual cost of 781 total, in certain years that might be doubled if the city chooses and the department promotes the addition of a float shift pool, if you will. Want to make sure, I paused there and make sure all that made sense on the investment piece.
Yeah, Madam Mayor. Chief, can you walk us through the MNO differences between the ongoing and the one-time?
Yeah. So the ongoing, let me go to the one-time because the one-time is when we hire a firefighter, we run them through the academy. They're going to get outfitted with two sets of that gear that you see there. Unfortunately, inflation is affecting us like everybody else. Gear is going up. It's also purchasing the radio, which has about a 10-year lifespan. But for every firefighter, we have to have a portable radio. That's the critical communication piece on a fire ground. So those are the main components, also the uniforms that we wear, et cetera. Those are the components of the one-time. The ongoing is the replacement of some of these things as they wear out. So you have, you also have training costs that are built into some of the ongoing MNO, maintenance on radios, maintenance on equipment, for everything we add, we have to maintain. So that's a lot of the ongoing MNO. It's a pretty small amount relative to the one-time expense. All right. I'll come to the mayor's question. How do we analyze annually? This is really something that we're prepared to do. I'm excited about this. That, yes, that list that I showed you earlier is dynamic. It's not a static one-time list. As we add fourth person, we reevaluate the entire system to make sure the stations that I showed you earlier are still the stations that make the most sense. So Mayor, Council, this will be an annual refresher and a look at how are we performing and where does it make most sense? Did anything change? And we would come back to council to report on that. So there will be ongoing annual evaluations, not only in that, but now with Dark Horse, we can actually look and see the improvement and report on the improvement as well. And that's it. Stand for questions. You said talk fast. I'm good.
And you didn't even talk that fast. I'm kind of speechless.
You shouldn't be. I think I was a year and the mayor said I was the fastest talking director out there. So I know when to speed it up.
Madam Mayor.
Go here and then Kathy, and then I'll head over here.
Yeah. Thanks, Chief, for this presentation. This really helps us, you know, as budget setters, you know, we we take the best feedback we can from you, helping to understand what your priorities are. These stations kind of helps us match what we want to do, what we'd like to see, the commitments we've made through CLAs or otherwise, and help bring the strategic plan that you guys have to life in the budget setting. So this is very helpful to understand your priorities. I know Councilmember Corliss has been talking about Station 14 and some needs there. Seeing that that's number two on there gives us an idea of like how quickly we need to advance four-person staffing to bring those priorities to life. So this is very helpful. Thank you so much for this. And yeah, thank you.
Council President Nash, thank you. And I do have one go back. I guess I talked too fast. And really for Councilmember Corliss, part of that risk evaluation was also looking at areas that we have hydrants and non-hydrants. That was part of the risk analysis.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Chief, thanks so much for this presentation. It is really good to see all the thought and the different analytics that went into where are we looking next to have those four-person staffing? I do wonder if we can step back on the one slide that showed the doc and responses. The pink and red looked really similar. Can you?
Darn it.
Right?
That's good on my screen. I'd see that screen's a lot of pink.
Yeah. No, thank you. So I just want to make sure that I understand this correctly. So right now, the goal is to reach within eight minutes.
Yep.
And here within this area, which is Station Six, which is number one on the list, we're only doing that about fifty-one percent of the time. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah.
And that, I take that back. That is system-wide. So it's fifty-one point two-two percent of the time citywide. That wasn't just for this.
Oh, not just that area.
Citywide.
Yeah, great. And if by going to the four-person staffing at the station, where do we see the, how much of improvement do you think we'll see?
About a thirty-two percent improvement within Station Six's jurisdiction. So it's kind of interesting to look at the data. It's a lot smaller if you look at the whole, but if you look at the jurisdiction in which we add four-person staff, and the improvement to Station Six's area is about thirty-two percent. And we can do that with every single station and area through this new tool that we have. It's pretty powerful.
Great. And so does the Dark Horse, is that system, that software, you're feeding into it, things like these special apparatus like hazmat? And also, so it's all going into that one software? Are we adding stuff?
Dark Horse itself really just looks at the historical call volume, and it understands. Then you ask it questions. The added things like added capacity, we add that to the equation.
What timeline are you looking at for adding for the next budget cycle for four-person staffing?
Dangerous question. If you ask us, we're ready. But I think we understand as well that the council has tough decisions when it comes to budget. And we know we're just one part of a great city. And so when it's available, we're ready. But we understand you all have some decisions to make.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything on this end of the table?
Awesome.
All right. Thank you.
All right.
Good to see you all. Thanks for being here. And with that, we'll take a break till six o'clock. See you all back here then.